Good evening. It's six o'clock and we'll call to order the meeting of the Carbondale City Council. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Kilman.
Here.
Councilmember Los.
Present.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Present.
Councilmember Rice Sanders.
Present.
Councilmember Dougherty.
Present.
Mayor Harvey.
Present. Next on the agenda, citizens' comments and questions. Citizens may address the city council for up to four minutes on any agenda item and for items not listed on the agenda during the citizens' comment portion of the meeting. Public comments will be accepted for a maximum of thirty minutes per agenda item. Those wishing to address the city council should raise their hand to be recognized by the mayor prior to approaching the podium. Speakers should provide their name for the minutes and end their comments when the four-minute time limit is announced. The council may suspend or waive the speaker time limit with the consent of a majority of council members present and are not required to respond to public remarks during the meeting. Are there any citizens who wish to comment? Yes, Ms. Woodson?
Thank you and good evening. My name is Marcella Woodson. I am here on behalf of Addicks Community Service Board and Carbondale United as inter-agency media and events coordinator. I just want to go over a couple of current and upcoming events, starting with Carbondale United. We have coming up this Thursday, on January twenty-fifth, our monthly gun violence meeting, which is going to be held at three oh nine East Jackson Street here in Carbondale at the Collaboration Center. This Thursday, we will be focusing on a year without gun violence in Carbondale. We'll also be building vision boards in regards to what that looks like as individual citizens and how we can contribute to the cause. We're still accepting magazines at the Collaboration Center if you know of someone or personally have magazines you would like to donate by Thursday. In addition to that, next, on February seventh, we will be hosting at the Collaboration Center as well a community solar presentation with Solar for All. This is available to renters who will be eligible to have solar panels placed on their homes. This is just an informational session and questions can be answered at the time in regards to that program. Outside of that, Carbondale United and Addicks Community Service Board both will be participating in the Black Expo held by the BCCSI, Black Chamber of Commerce of Southern Illinois, on February tenth. So that wraps up the announcements. In addition to that, I would also like to state that Addicks Community Service Board is making an effort to submit the 2024 Youth Build Grant application. The deadline for this is February first. One thing that I would like to bring to the city is that Addicks is looking to acquire a place of business or a place of property where we can actually utilize it as a training facility for workforce development programs. This would include apprenticeship programs with carpentry and construction. Addicks has actually reached out to the city of Carbondale in regards to two properties in specific, which would be Addicks High School as well as the properties that are on College Street at the old police department location. So these are two things that we like to bring to the council as well if it takes additional conversation in regards to this. One question that came up was, who has the authority to give access to these properties? Being that the grant application has to be submitted by February first and having a training facility in the city of Carbondale would bring workforce development as well as other opportunities and local dollars into the community. So with that being said, this concludes my announcements and if any further information can be provided on the Youth Build Grant application process, please feel forward to reach out to myself and my information can also be provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mays.
My name's Trastady Mays and I'm here as the current president of the Black Chamber of Commerce of Southern Illinois and I wanted to announce Black Expo 2024, which will take place Saturday, February tenth. It will be in this room from ten AM to three PM. We have a total of fifty-seven vendors. We have so much to choose from, I cannot list. There will also be social service organizations present with information. If anybody has any questions, you can always ask me and I have flyers if anybody needs them. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Lutecki.
Sandy Lutecki. I'm representing the Neighborhood Alliance and we have our annual meeting on February third. It's going to be hybrid. It will take place in person at the library. You can also log on. It's from ten to twelve and it's time to interact with other community organizations and all community organizations can have time to tell us about their program. You need to contact Study Circles in the city or Sarah Hyer before the end of next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper.
My name is James Cooper, Jr. Honorable Medical Discharge with Asthma, Disabled African-American Veteran for the record. Note, Carbondale City Attorney Jamie Snyder, who is white, is present. First Amendment right, freedom of speech. The right to express one's thought and opinions without government restriction is guaranteed by the First Amendment. Congress should make no law abridging the freedom of speech. My January twentieth, two thousand twenty-four Declaration of Affidavit that Carbondale Mayor Carolyn Harvey, Carbondale City Council Members Ginger Rice Sanders, Adam Los, Nancy Maxwell, Jeff Dougherty, and others have witnessed me, James Cooper, Jr., for years tried to surrender to authorities, but Carbondale Police Chief Stan Reno, the FBI, and others have refused to arrest me. My January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four Declaration of Affidavit that I certified Mayor Carbondale, Carbondale Mayor Carolyn Harvey, Carbondale City Council Members, the FBI, and others, a copy of the February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen Carbondale Police Officer Randy Mathis filed false report against me, complaint number twenty-eighteen oh one one six-three CPD, and my January twentieth, two thousand twenty-four Declaration of Affidavit that I'm still seeking attorney to file my actual appeal, general number five twenty-three oh-six-eight oh, are being certified mail to Jackson County State's Attorney Joseph Antias, the FBI, Fifth District Appellate Court Clerk John Flood, Webster County State's Attorney Ted Thompson, Jackson County Clerk Cindy Savannah, US Senator Richard Durbin, Olivet Free Wheel Baptist Church, and others. Under Chief Reno's leadership on January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, Officer Randy Mathis and Sergeant A. Rincetto came by the home I presided at complaining, raising hell for a confrontation referenced in the filed false report. Additionally, I'm mailing the same people mentioned, my January twentieth, two thousand twenty-four Declaration of Affidavit, other people Shirley Cooper, Carla Johnson, and others that were at my federal court hearings on April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. I was first two thousand eighteen to support me and witness the corruption against me by Assistant US Attorney Amanda Robinson, and my January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four Declaration of Affidavit that asked Carbondale Mayor Carolyn Harvey at Carbondale City Council Meeting, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, what if any action slash investigation have you called for against Carbondale Police Chief Stan Reno and Carbondale Police Officer Randy Mathis? No response. My Declaration of Affidavit is being taken to Jackson County Clerk's office to be filed on that day, however, however, some in the clerk's office are making inaccurate entries for my doc sheet. For instance, on my doc sheet in case number nine-two dash CF dash eight-five, the January sixteen, two thousand twenty-four entry inaccurately describes I'm not pursuing appeal. But I am still pursuing the appeal in my nineteen ninety-two Jackson County Court wrongful conviction. The Carbondale City Council records will be requested for at least the year and a half I've been speaking here, starting August ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Combined with the mentioned injustice, it was outside the record unknown to Jackson County Court Judge David Watt, Jr. at my sentence slash judgment hearing, August thirty-first, nineteen ninety-two, a wrongful conviction when Jackson County Assistant Prosecutor Amanda Robinson, a racist prosecutorial misconduct, Luther Social Service, Mayor Illinois, and my corrupt defense attorney, John McDermott, broke the law and covered the massive child sex abuse against many black boys, likely hundreds over the years, and did not present a written report or testimony from my counselor, Sedell Mitchell, Luther Social Service regarding my June twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-two conversation report at recall of the sexual abuse against me, well under eighteen, in the nineteen eighty-two upper band program fairly funded overnight summer camp in the dormitory at SIUC by men in position to trust, the director Rayland Young and the sister director Donna Wilson. The powers that be are still trying to kill me and a third member of my family in just over the last year includes medically to keep the massive child sexual abuse against many black boys covered up. I'm the peaceful person, I'm the victim hundred times over. The authorities are currently rebuilding the old dilapidated house near where I resided. Though several of my VA dispositions were filed on October twelfth, two thousand seventeen, and my VA intend to file April twelfth, two thousand seventeen, the VA hasn't sent me a new correct decision, sent in the VA's July sixth, two thousand twenty-three letter to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Once again, I'll remind you to please check the city's website for updated guidelines for citizens' comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, in the back.
Hi, my name is Carson Cates and I am here because there is an ongoing call for striking and actions of solidarity with Palestine this week, so I am here to urge the city of Carbondale to issue a statement of support for a ceasefire. Since October seventh of last year, over twenty-five thousand Palestinians have died and over sixty thousand have been wounded. These numbers will continue to rise as bodies are pulled from the rubble, the sixty percent of Gaza that has been demolished. It will rise as access to food, medicine, and shelter decreases. Gaza is down to six ambulances for its over one point two million population, eighty-five percent of which has been displaced. Since the original displacement of Palestinians by the Israeli government in nineteen forty-six, the US government has supported Israel to the tune of three hundred billion dollars as well as access to advanced military weapons, which means we are not only complicit but are actively funding this humanitarian catastrophe through our tax dollars. Over half of Americans currently support a ceasefire and yet our will is being denied and ignored on a federal level, making it imperative that we express our support as individuals and as communities. Being loud on this issue will make us that much harder to ignore.
We do not, please do not interrupt. Please do not.
It is easy to become desensitized when we are disconnected by space and culture from this struggle. It is easy to ask ourselves, what difference can I make? But we cannot continue to choose easy over just. Even though our individual impacts might feel small, together we can apply political pressure to our federal government to do the morally right thing and stop supporting the annihilation of Palestine. Unless we act now, this brutal conflict will not end until the last Palestinian is forced from their land through death or displacement. I believe in the fundamental rights of indigenous people to be allowed to not only live but to thrive in their homelands. If you agree with me, I urge you to express your support for the ceasefire immediately and permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others? If you agree, you can stand or clap, either one. Thank you. Are there other citizens who wish to comment? Yes.
My name is Connor Sullivan Aero. I would like to expand on what the previous speaker said. Going into this meeting, I was conflicted of whether I wanted to make a comment at this time, but not even half an hour before this meeting started, I watched a chilling video from the British News Channel ITV in which they interviewed a group of Palestinian refugees in the so-called safe zone that Israel had set up. They had gathered with white flags, with their hands up, and they explained that they were going to try to reach their family members and bring them back into the safe zone. No sooner than the interview concluded than the camera person captured an Israeli sniper, watching the exchange the whole time, opened fire, and gunned down one of the refugees in cold blood, their white flag stained red with the blood as he died. I have been archiving heinous atrocities like this committed by the IDF on a daily basis and it is unraveling at a stunning unbearable pace. Nearly thirty-three thousand Palestinians are believed to have been killed, probably more, as the previous speaker stated, as the population, eighty-five percent of them have been pushed closer and closer to the border and the sea. Over half a million are at risk of imminent starvation because the Israeli government is blocking seventy-five percent of humanitarian aid shipments. What happened on October seventh was an atrocity. It was horrifying, but what Israel is doing is at least as evil, probably more so, because the government has made it very clear that they have one goal here, not self-defense, not counterterrorism, it's genocide. It's genocide when Netanyahu invokes the extermination of the nation of Amalek. It is genocide when Israeli soldiers gleefully chant that there are no innocent civilians in Gaza. It is genocide when news anchors on Israeli television are cheering for the total extermination of the Gazan people. Never again was supposed to have a meaning and yet, for my entire life, for all of our lives, we have watched genocide after genocide after genocide unfold because the international community refused to do something. Well, now we have another chance. The time is now. The United States government has to act, needs to stop supplying Israel with more weapons and money to continue butchering the Palestinian people. It has to stop aiding and abetting this evil. So that's why it's important for us to get involved as Americans who are complicit in this conflict. So I share the call to this city council to adopt a ceasefire resolution and do everything it can to push this government to act and bring about a peaceful solution for both people. Thank you.
Are there others who wish to speak?
Excuse me for my outburst earlier.
Could you?
Yeah.
State your name, please.
Oh, my name is Jonathan Carricker. I live in Carbondale. Just to expand on that even further, if anyone on this council is afraid that their vote or whatever, I don't even know what resolution you think we can do, just like as a general statement as a city to speak out against these atrocities, but if any of you are concerned about being perceived as being anti-Semitic, just understand that there's a very big difference between anti-Zionism and antisemitism. Zionism is primarily an apocalyptic kind of like, it's really more espoused by people who want to bring about the destruction of Jewish people, actually. So there's actually nothing more antisemitic than Zionism, actually, in my opinion, hardly. And so, you know, don't let that stand in your way. Learn the facts, read about the history of the foundation of Israel, where really it was kind of something that was set up to really just make it not Europe's problem anymore, the Jewish problem, very antisemitic. The whole founding of it and to just like displace Muslim people in that process is just even compounds the horrors of that. So please, just kind of like learn the difference between Zionism or anti-Zionism and antisemitism because nobody here is antisemitic, I think. So, yeah.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Monti.
I just want to comment on something that we see in front of our eyes getting bigger and bigger every day. The transportation center, all the exterior steel is up and you can actually get a feel now for the size and the mass of that building. The future is yet to come. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we will move to the next item on the agenda, council comments, general announcements, and proclamations. We do have a proclamation that we'll do first.
Whereas human trafficking is a public, excuse me, human trafficking is a public health issue and crime that exploits the most vulnerable among us and weakens the health and well-being of individuals, families, and communities across generations. And whereas more than twenty years after the passing of the Trafficking Victims Protection Act, human trafficking still exists, including the forced or fraudulent recruitment, harboring, or transportation of people for labor or commercial sex, and whereas an estimated twenty-seven point seven million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, including cases of human trafficking reported in every US state and territory, and whereas human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are disproportionately at risk, including people affected by abuse, violence, poverty, unstable living situations, social disconnection or discrimination. And whereas human trafficking can be prevented by building individual community and society understanding and resilience, reducing social inequities, and addressing the conditions that contribute to exploitation. And whereas a successful response to human trafficking requires a coordinated, community-wide effort, every individual, family, and organization can contribute to enhancing human trafficking, awareness, prevention, and response by learning to recognize the indicators of human trafficking. Now therefore, Carolyn Harvey, Mayor of the city of Carbondale, Illinois, hereby proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-four as Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to accept the proclamation? We'll start to my left. Comments on this end? Ms. Rice Sanders.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Monti stated something about the SIMS program. I have something to say about the SIMS program. I'm concerned that minorities and the disadvantaged are not being selected to work as tradesmen for the SIMS program. I have taken it upon myself to put together a black directory of tradesmen and I did make some phone calls last week and I talked to the Pipe Fitters Union, the Carpenter's Union, and the Heavy Equipment Operators Union. They were very open and transparent about the list that they have when workers are not employed and open to work with the city as much as possible to make sure that minorities are on the job. So I have started compiling a list and I would like for that list to be available and I did talk to Mr. Fager about that, but I am concerned. There is a lot of money being put on this Southern Illinois transportation multimodal station and I would like to see black tradesmen to be able to work and not to be overlooked because we have signed a waiver by the city of Carbondale. I believe that we have said that we have twenty-five percent of our compliance goals and I would love to see our compliance officer to do her job to make sure that individuals are on the job. So that's all that I have to say about that and thank you for this time and space.
Thank you. Ms. Kilman.
To reference some of the citizen comments earlier, I could understand why this body might be hesitant to take up the global conflicts that might seem so far away from us here. From my perspective, I see all human life as valuable and all a part of one body and I'm blessed to love both Israeli and Palestinian friends, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, and otherwise. I feel that Carbondale is very much connected to the broader world and a part of it, not removed from it, though in the Midwestern United States, we're very insulated from much of the conflict around the globe and that's a privilege that we hold here. I don't think it's controversial for Carbondale city government to advocate for peace across the globe, especially in the ongoing war between Israel and Palestine. Last night, Carbondale city council members and staff were sent a letter via email from the author, Dr. Rob Krakowitz, and A. Christina Krakowitz, residents of Carbondale, Colorado, urging the Carbondale, Colorado city council to forcibly evict any migrants framed as, quote, "illegals," from the valley stating, quote, "We are not a sanctuary valley," in all bold lettering. There was also a request not to publicize their letter, but they are not my constituents and I don't listen to bigots. What a luxury it must be to be so full of people that you don't need anymore and I personally would love to see those fine people sent here. We could certainly use them. I would be happy to take them in. I think that that's our moral obligation as a city, to be a place of refuge for all people. So, take that. Rob Krakowitz.
Again, please don't interrupt. Could you wait until she's done with her comments if you agree with them? Are you done? She's done. Okay, sir, please. I know you agree, but let's be civil. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Hill? Nothing? Okay. This side, anyone? Mr. Los? No? Okay. Nothing? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. Next thing, oh, Mr. Williams? Yes?
We've got a number of transportation-related issues on the agenda tonight and I wanted to introduce our two civil engineers and they're really excited to step up and introduce themselves, but I wanted everybody to, in particular, city council, to know who they are because we had the most productive year this summer that since I've been at the city and we've had very limited staff with just these two engineers. So Eric Turk is a Carbondale native, SIU grad, and Shaunice O'Neil just got her master's degree.
All right.
Hello, my name is Eric Turk. I'm a local from Carbondale and I graduated from. I really enjoyed working on all the projects this summer and being able to work on the roads that have so desperately needed. The infrastructure upgrades was very fulfilling and I know that they hadn't had the work done in many years and I was very happy to be a part of it.
Hey, how y'all doing? I'm Shaunice O'Neil and I, not from here, I'm from St. Louis originally, but I did graduate from SIU and received my masters from SIU. So been a part of the community for six years, so I like it here, so I decided to stay.
She's modest, too.
She's a six-time letterman with SIU Athletics, right?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so next thing on the agenda, public hearings and special reports. Mr. Williams.
The first item, two point one, is to review and accept the FY twenty-three audited annual comprehensive financial report and other supplemental financial reports. So we have Mark Dallas here from our longtime auditor of Kerber Eckenbrackl.
So we have the main audit, which hopefully everyone's had a chance to kind of prove through it, all two hundred and twenty-two pages of it. Then also there's the fire and police pension reports as well that need to be reviewed and approved. And then, as we do with all of our audit clients, is we always put together a presentation that goes over the key parts of the audit. Thought I didn't get closer? Okay. Thought I didn't get closer. Okay, sorry about that. You're getting old, Jeff. I am, too. But that's what I'm going to just hit a few of the highlights in the audit of the presentation. And feel free to stop me and ask me, you know, any questions you might have. But what this presentation includes, you want to go? Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jeff. So no, go to, stay there. So the first thing, just an overview of the 2023 audit.
You need to speak into the mic so those who are listening in also can hear you.
What's that?
You have to speak into the mic.
Okay.
So that the ones online can hear you also.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
The first item or the first tab is an overview of the audit, just talks about the key parts of the audit. The second is required management communication between an auditor and those in charge of governance, or in this case, the City Council. It also has the management representation letters that management has to represent to the audit that they've disclosed. You know, they've answered all of our questions. They've just, you know, they've just gave us all the information we had requested, et cetera. The third part, it's kind of the biggest part, is just the performance highlights. And I'm just going to touch a few things there. There's information on your pensions. And then the last thing is management advisory letters, our management advisory letters. So as we see something during the audit, then we are required to report that to those in charge of governance in a written letter. And that's what that, the last item does. So any questions on that? On the overview, I just want to talk about a couple of things. If you turn to page one. We always want to point out the first thing is the responsibilities. You know, management is responsible for the fair presentation of these financial statements. They're in charge or they have the responsibility to make sure they have the proper internal controls, including monitoring ongoing activities. It's an auditor's opinion to express an opinion on these financial statements based upon our audit work, our testings, our confirmations, et cetera. This audit, we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which means we didn't have to audit, we didn't have to modify anything in our written opinion letter that might, needs to be disclosed. So it was a clean opinion. Jeff, let's go to page three. So the third item on this page, management cooperation. So like I said, we mentioned we received the management representation letter, but we did receive full cooperation. They gave us full access to the books, and there was no disagreements. As far as any audit complications or significant consultations that was required, there was none. And any disagreements with management, there was none. And on page, and you'll see on page four, the audit journal entries, there was three audit journal entries required to make adjustments to the books from things that we found in performing our audit procedures and our tests. Any question on that? Management communication, I just mentioned that earlier, and that's the first part of the second tab. And at the very end of this management communication letter is the audit journal entries. So we're required to report to those in governance of what those journal entries are. And if we pass on any journal entries, sometimes if something's not that significant, an auditor can pass on it. But on this page four, it lists out all the entries we had to make, and also there was no past adjustments, so we wanted to report that. Performance highlights on page 11. Page 11, Jeff. Think you're going the wrong way. May have technology glitch here. I'm not for sure. But if y'all would turn to page 11 on the, on the presentation, this is a statement of your net position. So this has all your, this has all your assets, all your liabilities, and then your net assets on these two pages. And this is on a full accrular basis, so this is the full accrual accounting basis on pages 11 and 12. So your, the city's total, on the primary government, your total assets are $165 million. Your liabilities, if you go on page 12, your liabilities is $112 million. So that leaves you with a net assets or assets minus liability of 53, almost $54 million. So that's on page 11 and 12. That's looking at your total assets and your total liabilities. Page 13 is looking at your statement of activities and list your revenues and then all your various expenses. And so during the year in April 30th, 2023, as far as the primary government, you actually had a change, a negative change in position of $6.2 million. Any questions on that? On the next several pages, we look, we look at the different governmental funds in more detail. We look in the proprietary funds in more detail, the water and sewer, et cetera. All that information is in here. On page, on page 17 is, I think, another important statement. So when you look at a set of financial statements, it's always good to have prior years there to see the changes between the two years. And so that's what page 17 does for the general fund, looking just specifically at the general fund. On page 18, we have the Water and Sewer Fund, so those are your two largest funds. And we do some comparisons to see how things changed between the prior year and the current year. Again, there's some advisories, comments in the back on some things that we noticed. None of them we would consider a material weakness. They're just, they're just an other matter that we are required to report. Those are the main things I was going to go over, but there's a wealth of information with the presentation and also the audited financial statements itself. So any questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dorgi.
I'd like you to comment for the public and for the council as well. Were there any significant findings in this audit?
No.
Comments? Ms. Kielman.
Just thank you to the Finance Department for always doing such a great job and keeping such a tightly-run, well-oiled machine over there. I'm sure that makes everyone's job a lot easier, and thank you for doing business with us.
Other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, item 2.2, Mr. Williams.
Item 2.2 is a pavement management plan presentation by our Transportation Engineer, TWM. We did a pavement management plan a number of years ago that rates all the streets in Carbondale, and we monitor that regularly, and that helps us, helps guide our decisions on how we use our local money every year for repaving resurfacing projects. So Jeff Reese is going to go over that real quickly and just to let council know and advance the budget where we're at.
Yes, thank you so much, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Yeah, as City Manager Williams said, I believe the city's done an amazing job. I mean, he's already kind of alluded to that, and it's been a really great year. So it's been a couple of years since I've been here. I think the last time it was still online, so I'm glad to meet here in person again and kind of give you that update, just kind of where the city is, kind of what the plan is, and kind of go from there. So you can kind of see this first slide here, the surface type. So this was a plan, I think, originally started in 2018. We did the original inspection. What that did was, you know, basically give the city a catalog of the streets. So what's the surface type? What's the area of the streets? How many lane miles, centerline miles, and what's the condition of these streets? So this map kind of shows that. You can kind of see the mostly orange, that's AC or asphalt concrete. Majority of the, of the city is in asphalt. And then brick is the BR, oil and chip, PCC, which is Portland Cement Concrete, and then gravel. And you kind of see that here in the pie chart as well. So this kind of breaks it down. Once again, almost three quarters of the streets in asphalt, and then moving down just under a percent in brick and gravel. So pavement condition index, this is a zero to 100 number with 100 being the greatest. So you have a brand-new street that's going to be in good condition at 100. It goes down every 15 PCI down to, so like 186 is good, and you kind of see it, and so on. Once you get down to 40, we kind of say that's very poor. So you really want to see the streets ideally, at least in that fair and above, so really that 56 and higher. And you can kind of, I'm going to go back to that one here in a second, but moving a few slides, so you can kind of see that, and that's exactly where the city's at. So yes, there are still some that are maybe not in as great condition. You still got 16% in that very poor, poor. But the city has done a very nice job here these last couple of years in improving that. So you can kind of see the majority in that kind of fair, poor with the new streets. Once you get to a brand-new resurfaced or maybe a new street in town, that goes to the good condition. In between, so we do have, have done several inspections through these years dating back to 2018. In between, we're not inspecting it every year as part of this contract, but in between, we kind of use these deterioration curves. So what that does is essentially predict what's the condition of the street in between those ratings. So a concrete's more of a linear deterioration, so that kind of, you can kind of see, it kind of goes in a straight line, and it will last you about 30 years almost. And then asphalt is a little more of a curvature where it kind of decreases, levels out, and decreases again, with asphalt not lasting quite as long, but obviously is a little cheaper than the concrete. And here is the overall PCI map. I kind of showed you the scores ahead of time, but here it is in a map. I know it's kind of hard to see on there, but what we have developed is a GIS system. So we have a dashboard system that city staff has, that they can, you know, click on these streets, see those ratings for any of those, so they'll see the surface type, the pavement rating for each of those, in addition to other data involved with that street. So, you know, kind of give you the background there on the program. Here's kind of the streets, you know, that have been done recently, and then kind of want to talk about some of the streets coming up in the near future. So Tower Road patching, these first three are more patching projects, they're existing concrete. They've had full depth, that's where you see the concrete, that's where the patches and the need, because the deterioration is kind of going all the way down to the subbase. Then you kind of see some partial depth, that's kind of more surfacy deterioration. So sometimes you'll see that. It's just a cheaper way to fix it. However, what this does, this really gets your streets, you know, maybe it doesn't go to the 100, but it does really improve that street at a fraction of the cost compared to, you know, doing a whole new overlay. So what that does is, yeah, you know, this street may not have been overlaid, but in addition, you've been able to overlay many other streets and continue raising that overall PCI. And I think that's the city's overall goal, you know, really, you know, stretch your dollar the furthest, get the best bang for your buck. And I think, you know, doing these projects on these concrete streets make that possible. So there's a few others like that. North Giant City Road, obviously a lot of traffic on that, able to get that done, get a lot of patching with that. There's a few different sections. This section here, as you can see, is Walnut to the Frontage Road, and then also West Pleasant Hill. Once again, a few different sections of West Pleasant are under construction or in design. This was another one where we did some patching to improve that condition. Moving on to some kind of overlay projects, so kind of with the asphalt, so this was an existing asphalt, and so we did some patching on the street and then have overlaid it and new striping, and I think it turned out very nice. And then the Frontage Road, so this was one, you know, a lot of commercial business on it, wasn't in great shape. This has been improved as part of those improvements, you know, the restriping, ADA improvements. Anytime you're doing overlays with asphalt, all the curb ramps have to be overlay, or have to be fixed, and make sure those are ADA compliant. And that was done with this project on each end of the Frontage Road. McCroy, this was funded in a large part to some, some grant funding, and I do want to say the city has done an amazing job with grant funding, and that's a testament to city staff. The city is continuously went in transportation grants. I honestly think probably you're one of the best in the state when it comes to grants. I just continuously, you'll see, the city staff does a great job with getting these grants and, and being able to do some of these projects. And I've got a few more of those you'll see here shortly in this presentation. But McCroy, this is an industrial section, so there's a little bit of asphalt, concrete, and the tourney movements that's been recently finished up. This is actually now done, I believe, but, and when I put this presentation originally together, this was still under construction. So you kind of see North Washington, definitely some bad areas there. So this is why this section was done. And I do want to say, you know, not always will it always be the worst first. Sometimes it is, you know, we want to improve those really bad streets. So working with city staff, we try to do that, but sometimes, you know, it makes sense not to do that, because the, once again, stretching that dollar the furthest, and what's the best bang for your buck to be able to improve your streets the most while, you know, continuously increasing that overall PCI. And then a few others, so Pine Wood, which was recently finished up, and then East College. This is another little section that should be getting underway soon. There's also a structure right next to that, where the, you know, I was just talking about grants, there is a, some federally-funded grant that will also do the, the structure right next to East College. And then this is actually going out to bid here soon. I think this will be on the street here in the next few weeks, so for the city to improve the, so a few more sections, Cedar View, East Sunny Acres, South Giant City, these will be done shortly. And, you know, numbers, you know, you see, basically, from when I was here a few years ago, that was like a 67th, and now we're at 69. So we're already improving. You know, I talked about the deterioration curve, so in the meantime, all these other streets are getting worse. So once again, just shows the work the city has done to continuously improve, to keep raising that number despite the fact other streets are deteriorating. So, you know, that's not including these streets. So these streets and these other ones I'm talking about, not included with that number, you know, with this work, the number should continue to go up. Ralston Road, obviously, you can kind of see from the picture, the culvert not in great shape, so that'll be replaced in the near future, construction planned for this summer. And then, once again, other plain streets, I just kind of mentioned, this is kind of a list of them, but you can kind of see it more in the map, and it doesn't show up perfectly there, but the, the green streets, these are ones that the city is looking to potentially here do this summer yet. So design has not started on these, but these will be the upcoming street projects that the city will be working on. Federal, one more time, federal grants, so these are two more. So we got Wall Street here, another section of Wall Street, and another section of Pleasant Hill. So these are both in design and currently being worked on and should be going and be constructed here in the next few years. And then finally, raise grants, city continuing to go after these grants, 100% agree, continue that success. This is kind of a list of an upcoming federal grant that the city is pursuing. I've kind of got a list, and once again, I kind of got in a map format here, so you can kind of see the streets. Some of these streets, if you look closely, are actually on the same map I just showed here. So if the city is able to get funding for those, that would then free up money to then, you know, put that money toward other projects. So some of these streets overlap. If you're not able to win it, then, you know, these streets would be then, you know, designed and ready to be built using other funds. And that's kind of a quick overview, just kind of want to give an update. Once again, I think, you know, the progress the city has made has been, has been great these last few years. And as you can kind of see, I think, with the upcoming projects, you should see continued success and continue to see that PCI number move forward.
Questions or comments from council? No? Thank you so much. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, item three, Mr. Williams.
Item 3.1 is regular city council meeting minutes from January 9. Item 3.2 is approval warrant for the period ending 1/5/24 in the amount of $1,252,065.85. Item 3.3 is acceptance of approved meeting minutes from boards, commissions and committees. Those meetings are from preservation, September 18th, October 23rd, November 13th of last year. Those meetings are from Preservation, September 18th, October 23rd, November 13th of last year. And the Sustainability Commission from October 19th and November 16th of last year. Item 3.4 is to approve amendments to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Governing Rules, Chapter 2, Section 1A. Item 3.5 is to award a contract for engineering design to TWM in the amount of $48,700 for Cherry Street resurfacing from Illinois to Oakland. And approve a resolution appropriating motor field tax funds for said work. Item 3.6 is to award a contract for engineering design to TWM in the amount of $42,500 for College Street resurfacing from Illinois to South Forest. And approve a resolution appropriating motor field tax funds for said work. Item 3.3, or 7, is another contract for engineering design to TWM in the amount of $53,200 for full and partial depth patching and resurfacing of North Marion Street and Old West Main. And approve a resolution appropriating motor field tax funds for said work. And item 3.8 is a contract for engineering design to TWM in the amount of $58,100 for Poplar Street resurfacing. And that is from Oak Street to Mill. And approve a resolution appropriating motor field tax funds for said work.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Does council have any questions on any item, anyone on council? I don't have questions, but on item 3.4, I'd like to see us look also at the educational requirements for that, which we talked about at the retreat also. Is there a motion from council? Oh, okay. Thought I just asked for that. Okay, Ms. Maxwell, please use your mic.
I was looking on the warrant and I was looking at the Chamber of Commerce item on here. So my question is, are we a member, the city of Carbondale is a member of the Chamber of Commerce of Carbondale? It was for 875? I just want to suggest that maybe the city of Carbondale become a member of the Black Chamber since we have two chambers here. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council? Ms. Rice Sanders?
I have a question about the TWM. We have 3.5, 3.6, and 3.7. I know it's the city manager's pleasure to contract with whichever engineering company he would like to contract with. Is there any reason why they're segmented, like the different ones? Like 3.5, when you write the contract out to them, is it in three different contracts or is it just one contract and you just have the different amounts there?
Well, first of all, it's not my decision on who we write contracts to.
Okay.
But yeah, these are four separate projects and because it's MFT money, we have to use IDOT's forms and that's, and they have to be individual resolutions.
Okay, I thought it was your pleasure to, to do the, so these were bidded out, other companies were bidded?
They weren't.
Okay, that's what I, yeah, okay. Well, all right. I, I also, I know we got a letter from Mr. Sean Henry, who used to be an engineer. And in our 2030 vision, we said that we were going to try to start giving contracts or do business with our local businesses. And I know this has been done, but I think in the future, we should look at our own local engineer companies to do things like this. So that's my comment on it.
Yeah, I, I saw the email from Sean and I can forward you some comments that I had on it. But I think Sean's firm in particular, he can, he can respond if he wants to, they're based in Quincy. And so we use TWM because for a number of years, I became really frustrated with not being able to get projects finished from year to year. And so we completely revamped our system. We, we worked through a process with IDOT to, to go through qualification based selection process. And we selected TWM and CMT as two contractors to do our work. And since then, we've been able to get all of our projects done on time and lots of road projects. And instead of being behind, we're always ahead and now we're the ones pushing IDOT to get things approved for us. So it's, it's working extremely well.
Okay, well, I'm just a big proponent of doing business with our local, to build our local businesses up. So I think that we have a responsibility to do that as a city government.
Other comments or questions on this side? Mr. Doherty?
I move approval of all consent items.
Is there a second, Mr. Loes?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience, any questions or comments from, yes, sir?
Connor Sullivan, I actually live directly off of the section of road in item 3.6. So I was curious, has any consideration been given towards converting these roads into brick roads? This seems like a slam dunk kind of deal. I mean, brick roads have more longevity than conventional like asphalt, concrete roads. Save the city money in the long term, make them look prettier. I've imagined that the longevity is probably better for the environment. And I think that it would also encourage drivers on those roads to drive more slowly and safely, considering that this is a residential area.
I think Mr. Loes is chomping at the bit as they say to answer that, but okay.
I resisted my, my normal impulse during the pavement thing to talk about brick roads and how great they are. Mainly because the, the meeting's already going to be very long. But yes, I, I am constantly after them about that. And people who know me and are close to me are sick of hearing about it, but that's okay.
Other comments? Yes, Ms. Mays?
Hi, Chastity Mays. So I guess I had a, I was confused about TWM. So are they just engineering design or do they come and like do the work also, the actual work? No?
Designers only.
Designers only. Okay, so that means that this money goes to them for just design and then people put in bids to do the actual work? Okay, so is that like another conversation another day?
Yeah, so what happens is when the plans are designed and they're ready for bid, we go through a public bid letting, anybody can bid on them. And generally, we get two bids for road projects from Samron locally and ET Simons. And then they may or may not have subcontractors depending on, you know, their schedule and how they want to manage it.
Yeah, so honestly, I just had a comment about the actual work. So I feel like when the actual work is being done, it's not enough for us to accept them saying they can't find minorities to do the jobs. There needs to be somebody to oversee that. And I understand that there, that might be someone's job, but they're obviously not doing their job. So I feel like we really need to put into place some type of oversight and checks and balances to like, there are people to do this work. There are minorities local to do this work, but they're not being given the chance to do the work. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Oh, Mr. Henry, you know I went blank there for a minute, but yes, Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief.
State your name first, please.
Sean Henry, lifelong Carbondale resident, so. I did send a letter to city council, email, just to bring to the forefront that I was here when we decided to go with TDOM or CMT to do a lot of the work. Have no beef with them as a company or anything. But it's a little more involved than the simplistic statement from Mr. Williams that my company is based in Quincy. We have an office here locally that employs local people and the money gets spent locally. I'm not advocating just for my business, I'm advocating for the other three or four engineering companies that have local offices here in town as well. Which at least three of us do millions of dollars of transportation projects a year with IDOT. So just as versed in that as TWM or any other contractor is or any other consultant is. And TWM's done a fine job for the city, again, not complaining about any work or anything else. I am actually very happy to see the city finally able to spend money on projects. I spent my career here waiting for that, waiting for the budget money for us to actually move forward with these projects. And now the tax revenues are coming in in different ways where you're able to do that. We're able to do that as a community, which is wonderful. I wish we could have done that during my last tenure here, 15 years, so it would have been really nice. So good to see now. I would just like the city to consider local businesses as we do for anything else. We hire local contractors to do the work, we get real picky about that a lot of times. Oftentimes pay a higher price to have a local contractor do the work. And there's the same thing with consultants, you know. Some of those companies, they're not in town, you know, they're local. They have some employees in town, some of them have majority employees that don't live in the Carbondale area. And my advocacy is not, again, for myself, it's about the community and about keeping our dollars local to spend them local. You know, and, and now that we're gaining that sales tax from online sales, I'd venture to say a lot more of our money stays local. For those of us who live here, because it's delivered to the address here, you pay the sales tax here for the city of Carbondale and for the state. So that's really all I have. I appreciate your time and your consideration of this as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Loes?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice Sanders?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next on the agenda is item 4.2, Mr. Williams. Oh, did I skip one? Okay, item 4.1, okay, let's go in order then.
Item 4.1 is a city council discussion regarding possible amendments to Title 124 as it relates to city council compensation. At the September 2023 retreat, there was a discussion regarding current compensation rates for council members and the mayor. Following the retreat, the city manager obtained salaries from other comparable communities which can be viewed in the table below. Council compensation varies widely across Illinois communities. This is based largely on the various types of government that exist throughout the state. As such, when evaluating compensation for Carbondale, it's important to compare cities with a council manager form of government. The city council should also be aware of the legal requirements for adjusting compensation levels. In Illinois, elected officials may receive whatever salary is provided for by municipal ordinance. Once the compensation rate is fixed, it can't be increased or lowered to take effect during the current elected official's term. Compensation levels must be fixed within 180 more days prior to the date when elected officials take office. Therefore, the mayor and council are only entitled to a continuation of salary in effect at the time they took office. Since these salaries are frozen and because most elected bodies have staggered terms, it's normal for members of the elected body to receive varying levels of compensation. For example, if the city council sets compensation for members at least 180 days before an election, only those members taking office would be entitled to the new compensation rate. So in the context of Carbondale, if the city council sets new compensation rates at least 180 days before the April 2025 election, only the three members elected would be entitled to the increase. The remaining three members and the mayor would receive the increased amount following the April 2027 election. The current compensation levels for the mayor and council have been unchanged since FY 1999. It's recommended that the council discuss compensation levels of the governing body and provide direction to staff if changes want to be made.
Okay, discussion. Let's start on this side. Okay, Mr. Doherty?
I'd like to address the compensation for the mayor. As the manager just mentioned, 1999 was the last time these were adjusted. And as a councilperson, I'd be doing this for nothing. So the $4,200 that we receive as council people is, is fine. But the mayor puts in a lot of time. It's a quote, part-time position. But it's the requirements for the job and the expectations from citizens and community groups. Is, you know, seven days a week, mornings, days and then evenings. And I, I think that there needs to be an increase in that compensation, whatever that is. But I think it should be more than $9,000 a year because of the time commitment and position the mayor requires.
Thank you, Mr. Loes.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Doherty. The, there's a little table and all this stuff. You know, Carbondale's low, but it's not that low. I don't know, I don't do it for the money. Anyway. But, but the, the job of the mayor is awfully big for what the mayor gets paid. So I think that ought to be addressed.
Comments on this side? Ms. Kilman?
I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I also take this job very seriously. I would do it for free because I love it. It's like getting a fresh pack of batteries put in me every single day that I get to go to work. Consider it a second full-time job because I am universally accessible to my constituents and they feel very comfortable reaching out to me either by social media or they have my phone number or they have my email. I wonder if, this is just a question because I'm not sold on the idea of raising any subsequent council's rate of pay per se. Just that, is there a way that we can incentivize people who are maybe coming from differing economic backgrounds than the people who are reflected on this council from, for running for office? If we, if we raise the rate of pay, are we incentivizing them to maybe go out for it? And spend the, the level of time and commitment that we're all willing to put into this? That they may be prohibited from otherwise? It's just a thought, but, you know, again, I would do this job for free.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, Mr. Loes?
I tried not to think of it as a job because if you actually parse out the, the hours that you put in and break that down, that gets really depressing. So I think of it as a volunteer position that comes with an honorarium, you know? Like sometimes you go and give a speech or whatever and they give you 500 bucks or something. I, if I started thinking of it as a job, I'd have to resign.
Any comments from audience?
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I'm looking at Charleston, Illinois, and it has a mayor 12,000 and trustee six. And their population is 17,000, ours is 21,000.
It's 21,000. I, I, I think, I believe that we should be bumped up to that pay. Be one consideration, 12,000 for the mayor and 6,000 for the trustees, at least or more.
Other comments from council? This side? Okay, now, comments from citizens?
Don Monti, having performed both the council job and the mayor's job. People think that with a council manager form of government, you know, all things go to the city manager. But the reality is, the general public expects to be able to deal with the head of city government, who is the mayor. And so I agree, you know, it, it takes a lot of time to do the mayor's job. Not just weekdays coming into the office and dealing with all the stuff that comes in. But going out and meeting citizens, doing like the mayor is doing with her, you know, meet the mayor kinds of things. Citizen groups contact the mayor's office, you know, and they expect, well, the mayor is going to come to our whatever affair or event. If there's a groundbreaking, if there's a ribbon cutting, all of those kinds of things. And it really adds up in time. So I'd say seriously take a look at the amount of compensation you're expecting of the mayor. For city council, it's not as critical an issue because the, the amount of time that a council member puts in, in my view, is far, far less than the amount of time that the mayor puts in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Yes.
Carson Kates, um, I just wanted to piggyback off of what Claire said about, um, raising the amount that you get paid as a way to create more opportunity for people of lower income. Um, because I did at one point, um, run a volunteer program. At what point, at, at the beginning, we did not offer, um, any kind of like stipend for anybody. Um, and eventually, we started to do so because we realized that requiring people to, um, dedicate a certain amount of time where they were not getting paid, um, keeps like lower, like it makes it so people who have to make a certain amount of money in their time, um, can't actually take, uh, can't like do that opportunity because they can't afford to not work. Um, so what we did was we offered a sliding scale stipend, and depending on how much money you make was actually how much like you could just choose to take. And I don't know how that would work for you guys, but, um, yes, that is definitely keeping people from that opportunity. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mr., Mr. Los?
I don't have to go first.
I saw your hand first.
Okay. Uh, well, here's what I would suggest. It sounds like there is consensus to raise the mayor's pay, so maybe we ought to figure out exactly where we want to do that, and then we could have an ordinance that would do that. We'd vote on that. You know, as far as the council thing, I don't, I, you know, I, I'm agnostic on it. I don't care. But if we're going to do anything with that, maybe we do that as a referendum. We can do that. We pass it, and it goes on the ballot. If people want our salaries raised, great. And if they don't, that's also fine.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes. Uh, sitting on city council, I think that we do maybe not as much as the mayor, but we do do. I get a lot of calls from citizens about this or that, or can we handle this, or can, you know, get somebody fired or whatever? A lot of things. So, um, this is time-consuming. You do have to read everything that you get, research it. It does take some time. And all of us are not fortunate, um, as Claire stated, financially. And, uh, if this was to get raised, for some of us, it would be a blessing. It would be, uh, assistance. I went out for city council because I got nowhere on the other side of that podium. So I wanted to get up here so I could try to help make a change. Um, I think raising city councils', uh, allowance would be a change that will be helpful for those who are here, uh, being a voice for the people in the community.
Anyone else on this side? Ms. Kilman?
I would agree with councilperson Los's suggestion to do this by referendum because it's kind of tacky for us to sit up here and vote for our own pay raise. The people should, um, elect whether or not we deserve a pay raise. I think that that's fair.
You can say that in the...
Um, we could do an advisory referendum next April, like we did with the Parks, Park District a few years ago.
Mr. Los?
Don't we have the authority to do a binding referendum on that?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Okay, I, yeah, you're good.
Do we need to do anything to do that? Okay, we have plenty of time. Did everyone hear that? And, okay, great.
To, to clarify, I'm sorry, to clarify, when I said, let's do that, the referendum, I mean for the council stuff, mayor, we should just have a vote on it. We'll vote on that, you know?
Okay.
But we don't, we don't need to do that for council.
Okay, Mr. Dougherty?
That seems to me kind of contradictory, um, to, uh, we'll, we'll take the action for the mayor, but we'll, uh, you know, pass it along. It's two different approaches. Uh, it is the council's, you know, uh, responsibility and prerogative to, to set the, um, salaries. And it's not for your salary. It is for the next people.
The next term.
Who may or may not be one of us. It won't be me. So I'm very much willing to, you know, take a stand on that because it's not going to affect me. Um, but, uh, what I would propose, uh, since there is a feeling of, um, increasing both the mayor and the council people, uh, is to, uh, increase the mayor's salary to twenty thousand dollars per year and the city council to six thousand dollars per year. And I think that is, uh, somewhat in keeping with, um, what we see across the state with, uh, other, especially university communities and university communities with council manager form of government.
Other comments from my right? Comments from my left?
I agree.
Ms. Ross Sanders?
I agree with, um, Councilman Dougherty.
Okay, other comments here? How do we do that? It would just be on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. Now, other comments from citizens. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Excuse me?
Yes?
So, I, I guess, what are we doing? There are a couple people who want to do a referendum and a couple people who don't. So I, I'm not sure where we're going.
Okay, let's see if we can get a consensus on that. Uh, I'm looking to my right, and I'll say consensus, I'm sorry, referendum, or bring it back to council?
You know, I can do either. My preference is for referendum, but if, if people want to vote on it, that's okay.
I would like the council to make the decisions.
Okay.
I'm for bringing it back.
To council? To this side? Counsel? Okay, so it's bring it back to council. Okay, thank you. Anything else on that item? Okay, moving on to item four point two. Mr. Williams?
Item four point two is a presentation and discussion of city-owned property at six oh eight East College. Uh, this is the Carbondale Warming Center. The Warming Center has utilized this property for the last four years as a warming center homeless shelter. Prior to the onset of COVID in early twenty twenty, the CWC was established to provide emergency shelter during extreme cold to individuals who have no other housing options. Once the pandemic began and based on need and public safety, the Warming Center expanded its hours to provide twenty-four seven, three sixty-five services. The property at six oh eight East College was a former dormitory that is part of the university city complex that previously housed City Hall and the Carbondale Police Department. Although the layout of the building is conducive to allow these services, the past several years of high occupancy have taken a toll on an already aging building. The Warming Center has been successful in making the best of the space, but if the property is going to be used long-term for the Warming Center, there are building issues that need to be addressed. Specifically, the restrooms and showers need to be renovated. There are accessibility issues throughout. There's a real need for a commercial kitchen, and the HVAC system needs to be replaced. Staff consulted an architect, design works, and a structural engineer, Hodge Engineering, to assess the building. Each provided a detailed report, which is attached, of building issues that need to be addressed, that the city wants to continue allowing the use of this property for a warming center or a similar use. Staff's providing this update so the council's fully aware of the future maintenance needs for this property. Until this point, staff has utilized building maintenance staff to do most repair work and have tried to minimize costs since this property doesn't generate any revenue. Staff requests that the council consider these ongoing costs, whether the city should make it a goal to bring this property into compliance, whether the city intends to continue allowing the Warming Center to occupy the building, and if staff should be directed to consider other alternatives for the space.
Okay, any discussion from council? Let's start on my left. Ms. Kilman?
At the risk of being the first one talking, um, obviously, or it's obvious to me, I'm not going to make a broad generalization here, it is obvious to me that the Warming Center is a necessity for the health and vibrancy of our community. It's obviously very necessary to a lot of individuals who choose to live here and reside here. We should support it. Um, do we have anyone here from the Warming Center tonight that could speak to maybe certain needs that they have, capacity issues that they're dealing with, if, if they would like a different space or would like to stay in the space that they're in now? I feel like that would be helpful context for us to have moving forward as we're attempting to build and sustain a working partnership.
The mayor's asked me to just briefly, I, I was on the Warming Center board initially when we got this all, um, kicked off, and I know Mayor Harvey, uh, has been involved for a number of years. And the, the real intent of bringing this up is we've continued to just kind of patchwork things. And, um, because we don't know the, the long-term use of, of the building, we don't know what the long-term plans of the Warming Center is. Um, there a couple years ago, we made some efforts to try to see if there, we could do some visioning with Good Samaritan House to see if maybe they could merge services and, and have one larger, uh, facility. Um, but that didn't, that didn't go anywhere. Um, so at this time, what we really want to know is, what we, the, the feedback we get from the Warming Centers, obviously, there's a demand for it. Um, I know their occupancy has been like forty-ish for a while. They're maxed out. Our police department, um, is over there all the time. Um, Carmelita does a great job of, the executive director does a great job of communicating with us about what's going on. Um, but we have had some issues where, like last summer, for example, the air conditioning went out on a Friday afternoon, and that, and it was really hot. Um, and that creates challenges. We've had heat issues a couple times. Um, so the real question is, is, is this a use that the city wants to continue funding or allow to operate at one of our properties? Um, if so, our options are, we can make some pretty significant investments in this building, um, or we can look at a different location. But that's really the question. Do we want to continue, is the council going to continue to fund these types of services?
Was that, were those, did your questions get answered?
It's a sufficient answer to my question. I'll probably have more as we move along through the discussion, but...
Okay, anyone else on this side? No? Okay, Mr. Dougherty?
I, I look at, there's two issues here for me. Uh, one is obvious, um, the, uh, the need for a warming center and a location for that. Uh, the, the second is that, I call it the Cambridge Building. Um, and, you know, twenty years ago, we looked at it and it was not feasible, uh, to make it accessible, uh, and renovate. Just, it, it just cost too much money. Uh, today, it's even more so. Um, and I, I think, you know, what we have, uh, on East College Street are some buildings that, you know, basically should be torn down. Um, now, that's my feeling about the Cambridge Building. We, we should not put money into it because we can use that money, uh, a lot better other places, especially if it's for a warming center. Um, there's a lot of dormitories for sale in, in Carbondale that are in much, much better shape than this building. Um, and I would, i-if we're going to invest in property for a facility, a warming center facility, uh, I would much rather us look at, uh, some other alternatives of other, um, properties in the community that would, um, well-serve the, the warming center. Uh, this building will not in the long run, and we should not invest any money into it other than tearing it down.
Mr. Los?
Well, based on the written material, that, that was my impression too, that the building is, you know, at this point in such a state that, uh, if we wanted to, you know, bring it into compliance, we would be better off taking that money and building an entirely new facility. But what I, what I couldn't tell from this is what, uh, you know, what we're, what, what's the choice here? Um, you know, is it, uh, boot them out and they're on their own, or is it we've got other buildings? Here's the, you know, the buildings that we have? Are we talking about buying a building that Mr. Dougherty suggested, or building? Um, you know, what would, what are our options?
Well, one option that's, that we've discussed internally, and we've spoken to Carmelita, and I, and, you know, obviously, this requires council's decision, is if, I agree with Mr. Dougherty, the, the whole complex is, is way beyond its useful life. We have stopped renting facility, with the exception of Jackson County Mass Transit, um, which is a different style of building. We've, we've stopped renting. Um, the, the Cambridge Building was in the best condition, um, when the Warming Center went there. And it's laid out as, as a dorm, it's laid out very, very well for that type of use. Um, what we've talked about is the buildings need to come down. So if, if council, that's one decision, if the city council wants to move in that direction of trying to get an idea what that looks like cost-wise, we could, we could do that. Um, maybe, maybe the idea is, um, one of those buildings tear down and build something new while the Warming Center is still in operation. Um, and that's another, another way to go about it. Or you can go about it completely differently and, and put it in a different building somewhere else. That location seems to work because, um, I know Victory Dream Center's there, Food Pantry, um, you know, our fire department's right next door. Um, it just, it's a, you know, the spot seems to make sense.
Comments, Mr. Hill?
Well, um, just to exclude the fact that Victory is there because for the longest, if any of the food from our food pantry was over there, they weren't allowed in there with it or whatnot. So, but, uh, another thing, do we have a building that's like now that we can? No, we don't have a building right now. Okay.
Other comments from this side? Ms. Kilman?
I'm amenable to building something new. I always think that's fun, getting something new in town. And it's a good opportunity for us to set a, a bit of a glass floor in Carbondale. Second time I've used that phrase today. But a, a bit of a glass floor where that no, the quality of life for any resident here will not pass below this threshold. And we can sort of make a stand on that and go from there. So that's my thought, I suppose, on the matter.
Anyone, Mr. Los?
Well, so if you're looking for direction, then, um, speaking for myself only, my direction would be, um, unless it's like very dangerous, uh, like more dangerous to be in there than be outside, which I think is the alternative, let's leave the Warming Center there while we're figuring out what, what we're going to do. And then I would like to see, uh, you know, some options there. Does it make more sense to buy a building, um, or build a building? Uh, you know, and then reassess once we know that.
Okay. Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll bring back some, uh, Mr. Dougherty?
The manager alluded to, or mentioned, um, the conversations with, uh, Good Samaritan House before, and, and, um, I guess that didn't work out because it hadn't happened in terms of consolidating, doing something together. Uh, is that how, off the table to, to talk about that, especially if we're going to invest a substantial sum of money to, uh, build or purchase a facility? Um, and, um, last council meeting, we talked about, uh, not wanting to fund, uh, duplication in the community, and this is definitely duplication. Um, if we could maybe, um, open that discussion up again as we go down this road.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments from this side? No? Okay. Oh, Mr. Hill?
Um, if we do purchase another building or build another building, is the city going to have any oversight, um, of how everything's going to be run like the day-to-day? Because I remember when, when we first moved here to Carbondale, we stayed in the Good Samaritan, and I remember how horrible it was. And I hear also how horrible it is at the Warming Center now, and that the city really needs to put its foot down with a lot of things that's going on. That's just what I hear. Um, so are we going to have any oversight of any of the operations?
Uh, I guess that's something that will be determined, but for those horrible experiences, I'd really like to hear about them since the, they are on city property. Yeah, so if we could talk after the meeting for specifics, that would be wonderful. Ms. Kilman?
I don't in any way wish to disparage the good work that the Good Samaritan House does. However, I have had numerous reports and also had friends who wound up becoming homeless that sought shelter at the Good Samaritan House that were treated unfairly upon the basis of either their sexuality or their gender identity because it is a certain kind of faith-based institution. And so, I would be hesitant to, um, bring them on as working partners for this unless there were assurances that situations like that could be avoided in the future. And I wouldn't want to ever advocate that someone compromised on something as dearly held as, um, their faith or their belief systems. But I think it would be unacceptable for us to provide housing for the homeless that directly, it put people who are already very vulnerable in a riskier situation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council? Ms. Maxwell?
Also, if we're going to do something with the Warming Center, I think we ought to be looking at the other cities in Southern Illinois that consistently drop their people off here. I feel like Marion, Anna, and other cities should contribute and not just bring your people over here and drop them off. That would probably be a help economically in running and providing funds for the Warming Center if we weren't housing the whole Southern Illinois. Thank you.
And exactly how do we get them to do that? How do we get them to do that, to contribute? And then what? Yeah, that's been done. I totally agree. Mr. Los?
Well, I mean, I agree with Ms. Maxwell, and I hear what you're saying. We can't make Marion do anything, including stop bringing their homeless people to Walmart parking lot and dropping them off, which they continue to do. But we can ask them publicly. And if they want to say no, then we can be informed of that publicly too. And, and I don't know, maybe they're not ashamed of it, but I would be. So then the other thing is, you know, and I don't want to, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to be callous or to discount anyone, anyone's experience who has stayed any, any place, home, you know, the Good Samaritan or the Warming Center. You know, but I'll, I will tell you that there is a tension between housing people and having the, like, people on the very edge and having that place be a fun place to be. You know, because a, a lot of, not all of it by any means, but a lot of the situation is related to mental health and substance use. And when you have people, I'll tell you from my own personal experience, I have a client right now who is, has been recently staying at the Warming Center. And I mean, there's no, there's no nice way to say it. He is not in his right mind. I mean, he's just not in contact with reality, and that's a mental illness thing. It's not a substance, in his case, it's not a substance use thing. But I know that we've seen in the weekly reports, you know, people OD in there and die. I mean, you know, sometimes people have to be carried out on stretchers. So, you know, maybe there's, if, especially if we end up custom building a building, maybe there's a way that we can kind of, you know, have some separation between the folks who are like there because they're not in contact with reality or they're in, in severe substance use issues versus folks who are not in that frame of mind and can, you know.
Okay, I think that's further down the road. At this point, we're just trying to decide what to do.
I get it. I just, I don't, I'd hate to see us lose track of, you know, how, actually housing people.
Okay. Any other council comments? No? Okay, now, Ms. Monti. And thank you while you're coming. Thank you for the history of those buildings. That was quite informative.
Don Monti? One question, and Mr. Dougherty probably knows part of the answer to this. The Brentwood Building, which would be 604, I guess, East College Street. When the crime lab was there, a lot of money was put into that building. And I don't remember what all it was. I don't know whether an elevator was put in that building or if there was some structural work done. But as a, I think it'd be worth at least looking at that building because it had a lot of work done to it. And it may be a place on an intermediate basis. You know, put the Warming Center there while you tear down Cambridge or whatever and build a new structure. I don't know. It's just a thought that occurred to me because, I don't know, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think, that was put into that building. A lot of it, I think, was from the state police, but as I recall, the city put a lot of money into that building. And then the state police walked away from the contract and left the city holding the bag for the, a lot of the cost of that improvement. I think the point that's brought up about, is it Carbondale Warming Center or is it the Southern Illinois Warming Center? Is a, is a valid point. And I can remember this kind of conversation going back to about 1974 or '75 when there was discussion about building the apartment buildings that are on Mill Street, high-rise apartment building and so on. And there was a lot of sentiment that if you build it, they will come. You know, build low-income housing and low-income people will flock to the city. The same argument's been raised about the city funding social service agencies. You know, we want to provide services for our residents, but the next thing you know, everybody from Southern Illinois is coming here and taking advantage of the services. I hear those arguments, and I've heard those arguments year after year after year. The dilemma you get into is if you say, well, we don't want to do anything for our residents because other people might take advantage of it, then our residents end up don't getting the benefit of services. So it's a balancing act. And the thing about asking other communities, you know, you're going to go down to Anna or are you going to go over to Carterville or up to Ducoy and say, hey, you know, we're building this wonderful facility in Carbondale. We'd like you to kick in 5% or 10% or whatever the cost. That's probably going to be a tough sell, especially when you got a lot of small communities whose city governments don't have access to the kind of revenue that the city government has access to. So that's a practical kind of thing. Speaking of practical things, back on the agenda item on the audit. I don't remember the council ever accepting the audit, and I think that's one of the things you're supposed to do, but anyway.
Okay. Other citizen comments? Ms. Mase?
Hi, Cassidy Mase. So I wanted to talk about duplication of services because Good Samaritan House and the Warming Center to me is not a duplication of services. There's a huge difference between those two. And I don't, I know you can't force anybody from those organizations to come and talk about what they do, but maybe just knowing the difference because the Warming Center is like, you can only stay there for a certain amount of time. But Good Samaritan, first of all, they only let like a few families in, and then those families can stay for a certain amount of time, then they go to transitional housing. So I just think that's not a duplication of services. So I definitely wanted to address that. And I'll tell you, for years as a social worker, I've had so many families and people talk about the condition of the Warming Center and that it's not. And I think that has to do with the building. There's just not, they just say, I don't want to go there. I've been there before and, you know, all of the different things that are going on. They have said that to me over, over time as a social worker.
Other citizens' comments?
Jonathan Kariker. Just as far as you were saying, that it could be a daunting task or the former, or was, that it could be a daunting task to go and ask the other communities in the area to chip in for a resource that, or a service that seems like we are providing for the region. I don't know. It just, it doesn't hurt to ask. All you have to do is show up to a meeting like this and bring it on their agenda. And all they could do is laugh at you and say no. But you could at least start the conversation somewhere.
Other citizens' comments? Okay, let's go back. Yeah, let's go back to item 2.1. And it's just so wonderful again to have Mr. Monti. He is just such a wealth of information. Thank you for keeping us on track. Mr. Dougherty?
Mayor, I would move to accept and place on file the audited annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2023.
Is there a second? Mr. Los?
Second.
Any discussion from council? We've had discussion, any discussion from citizens? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Los?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice Sanders?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes, and that motion passes. And now we'll go to item 5.1. Mr. Williams? Oh, Ms. Claire. It's actually you, he said. 5.1.
The background reads, discussion by the public body in executive session of the below-listed exemption is permitted by the Illinois Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS-120. While no action is anticipated, if any action is taken as a result of the discussions held in the executive session, final action will be taken only upon return to open session and will be preceded by a public recital of the nature of the matter being considered and other information that will inform the public business being conducted. This will be entered into executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees as permitted by 5 ILCS-120-2C2.
Thank you. And there will be no decisions made in closed session for those who don't want to hang around. Okay, can we get a motion, please? Ms. Rice Sanders?
I move that we enter into executive session.
And is there a second? Ms. Kilman?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Los?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice Sanders?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes, and that motion passes. And we will go to closed session.